Okay, it's six o'clock and I'll call the July 2, 2019 Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Painter, will you call the roll?
Chair Keeney.
President.
Vice Chair List. Member Rains.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Member Lepper.
Here. Our next item is to approve the agenda. Are there any -- anything that a commissioner would like to pull from the agenda as published?
Actually, Madam Chair, I think we consent calendar is the first item on the agenda. Move to approve consent.
Good question. This is -- I see it as a regular meeting.
I withdraw my comment. I'm so used to being chair.
I know you are.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
As presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's quite all right. Let's move on to the consent calendar. First order there is to adopt the meeting minutes from our June 4, 2019 meeting.
I believe we just approved that by virtue of the fact we approved the agenda as presented.
Is that -- so that's how that works?
If staff could just offer an opinion, when we approved the agenda as presented, we did approve the consent calendar since we didn't pull anything off.
We didn't pull anything from the agenda.
We made no modifications.
I was going to go stepwise through adopting the minutes and then bylaw.
I should know this by now, but I've forgotten everything I've learned over the past many years.
No, it's my understanding unless Mr. Painter corrects me, when you approve the agenda, you're not modifying the agenda, pulling anything off, or changing the order in which you will consider the items.
All right, so move to approve item one, consent calendar.
1.1, adopt. I'd like to do it stepwise.
Second apology.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the June 4 meeting?
Certainly.
My motion and a second.
My motion is to approve the consent calendar as presented, which is 1.1 and 1.2. I was moving to approve both at the same time.
I was going to do it stepwise in case there were any comments on the bylaws.
I defer to the chair's prerogative.
Okay. 1.1.
Move to adopt.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to 1.2, adoption of the Planning Commission bylaw amendments, Article 5B, as directed by the commission last month, June 4. Is there any discussion on the bylaws?
Move to adopt.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. There are no items pulled from consent calendar. We'll move on to item number three. I know some interest to the public, public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to the commission on any other topic? Seeing no interest, we'll move on to number four, communications. Mr. Painter, were there any last minute communications to the Planning Commission?
No, we have no communications this evening.
Thank you very much. Number five, presentation in educational workshop sessions. We have none, so we'll move on to our environmental assessment public hearings. The first item of business is 6.188 Main Street, the Fuel for Less. We have a request for a master sign plan amendment. Mr. Painter, would you please start with your presentation?
Sure. Tonight's request was filed by Michael Ford of All Sign Services on behalf of Abdul Hamid. He's representing the property owner of Fuel for Less LLC. The request involves an amendment to the site plan review 90-08, the master sign plan. This plan was originally approved back in 1990, then subsequently amended in 2010 and 2011. The project site is located in Lower Main Street, area of downtown where commercial, retail, office, and restaurant food services exist. The city general plan and zoning map show the site designated in zone, central business district. The master sign plan amendment would add two internally illuminated wall signs, sign numbers five and six of the sign plan. Their sign area would increase by 2.22 square feet to the previously authorized 171 square feet of aggregate onsite sign area. Business need is the primary reason for the additional signs and sign area, as signs would improve public visibility of the business along with advertising that a convenience store is present onsite. One of the two new signs would be mounted on the west-facing exterior fascia of the pump canopy. This channel-lettered sign matches in sign dimension and sign area of two existing pump canopy signs mounted on the east and north pump canopy elevations. The second new channel-lettered wall sign would be mounted on the north elevation of the convenience store and have the sign copy stating Food Mart. Both the number of signs and aggregate sign area exceed those previously authorized by the commission. These deviations to the master sign plan require Planning Commission approval before a construction permit may be issued. Staff's analysis of the request included an environmental review, a review of consistency with applicable general plan goals and policies, site plan review, design criteria, and the city sign regulations. Staff determined that the project's new on-premise signs for an existing facility meet the exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15311A of the SEQA guidelines. The gasoline station with store is a highway-oriented land use that provides highway travelers and locals alike with fuel and convenient retail services. Visibility of the use is indeed limited for travelers along Highway 50 due to existing trees along Hangtown Creek, as well as other structural improvements. The minimal increase of sign area over the commission's 2011 authorization of 171 square feet maximum aggregate area appears justified for this business need. The new signs utilize colors, materials, and finishes that have continuity with the color scheme of the business and compatibility with existing permitted and installed signs under city permits. The signs are designed at a scale appropriate for their wall location. The proposed signs are therefore consistent with the site plan review design criteria, the sign regulations of city code, as well as goals and policies relative to business identification and visual character within downtown Placerville and the US-50 scenic highway corridor. Staff recommends the commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the finding that the request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, make findings A through D provided on page six of staff's report, and conditionally approve the request for a project known as 88 Main Street, Site Plan Review 90-08-R3, major change, subject to the conditions of approval within Attachment 1 of staff's report. Michael Ford is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Painter at this time?
I do.
Go ahead.
Will the logo that says Fuel for Less that is on the east and west sides of the canopy be the same on the north side? Will they use the same logo?
They will be identical, yes.
They will be identical.
In area, illumination, yes.
So as long as the logos are the same all the way around? Okay. And then who's responsible for maintaining that welcome to Hangtown, the grass and the weeds that can be obstructive to what's on the streets?
I think --
Is that the city or the Rotary?
Some city staff. I think our community services department serves -- they do some maintenance of weeds in that area.
Okay. I know Rotary maintains it, too.
I know, correct. Right.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Mr. Ford, would you like to address the commission?
I just wanted to point out one thing on the plan. Mr. Painter brought it up to my attention before the meeting. On our drawings, I think we had item six, or item -- we were showing the new sign is on the north elevation. It's actually on the west, so we will correct that when we get to the building permit stage. But I just want to, you know, correct any concerns you might have about where that was shown on the plans. But the staff report was correct. Our drawings were incorrect. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. That was something that kind of puzzled me when I was looking at your plan and I was going, well, this one's already in place.
Yeah, it was not matching up.
Now, what am I really supposed to be evaluating? Are there any other questions for the project proponent? No? Seeing none, thank you very much. At this time, are there any comments from the public on this project? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close the public portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Any comments on this project?
No. I thought it would be helpful for them to get visual, you know, recognition from the highway, and I think it's good.
Yeah, and I appreciate the clarification so that we will have proper revised plans with the building permit at the completion of the project. So at this time -- oh, Commissioner Friend.
Commissioner Rains, any comments?
No, I already made them. Thank you.
Again, I want to apologize for my confusion with the agenda approval. I'm surprised I didn't remember how that process is supposed to happen.
It's okay. You're in a different chair tonight.
I am, and I'm enjoying it. So my approach frankly, and I don't want my comments to be construed as opposition to the project. I'd like to talk about this in a little bit higher level perspective. On one side, I'm not a huge fan of the sign ordinance as we have it because I think it's overly restricted. I've always said that, and the fact we don't enforce all aspects is, I think, to me testament that we should come back and review it at some point. That being said, a couple of things about this. It's absolutely true what staff states in their report, that there is visibility impairment for this business along Highway 50. That's absolutely clear. So a couple of questions I'm just going to throw out to my fellow commissioners to please consider. One, how much additional signage would be appropriate? In other words, what would be the threshold at which we would say, oh, that's too much, even if we accept the premise that the visibility is restricted? Well, how much can you have? The chiropractor's got a nice, large, giant pole sign, okay? It's not a highway-oriented business, but it certainly helps our visibility. Also, adding this signage, if you can't see the place in the first place, how is this signage necessarily going to assist in meeting the stated objective, which is the basis for the request? And again, please, I'm not speaking against the request. I'm talking about it kind of a higher level. Is perhaps trimming the trees a better approach? There are a whole number of businesses along that stretch of 50. Some are, might be highway oriented and some not, which are equally impeded. So a premise, and I always approach these things, okay, so if I'm going to grant a request for a variance from our existing codes and regulations, I have to be confident, have comfort that it's going to be applicable to subsequent requests from other applicants that may come before us, right? You follow what I'm saying? And so I'm really not sure if this is the best approach. And again, I'm not speaking against the project. I'm not. I'm just wondering, are there other ways to achieve the objective while staying within the county, the city ordinance, the sign ordinance? Or should we be doing some other things? And I just throw those out for consideration by other commissioners in terms of how I look at this.
When you make that turn right there by KFC, you have to slow down. By slowing down, you see the gas station and you will read the white words against a red background that say Food Mart. Then I drove through town and looked at all the gas stations, and they all have Food Mart signs, and they all have signs on all three sides of their canopy. So this would just be bringing this edifice up to par with those others and not exceeding.
Well, my understanding is not so much the words Food Mart as is the total signage that's being permitted. And I'm also thinking that they actually want to catch people as they're driving between, oh, God, Canal and 49, Highway 49. They can make the turn at 49. Oh, there's the 76, right? And again, I don't want to necessarily get too specific nor delay the discussion on this. I'm just saying that what, I guess the fundamental question is, what are the principles involved here that should be guiding our decision as to whether or not to grant this particular request? And I think there's a number of things that are kind of involved with this particular request, so that's all. And that may not be helpful, but it is, I think, something that we should consider.
Yeah. I guess I would just say, I looked at the project and the context of the project and could see that they would want to catch that traffic and things like that. So of course, there's other things that could happen, the tree trimming, things like that. But I think the illuminated sign would really be helpful, especially with night travelers offering different places that are open and things. As far as the larger context, I definitely think that's food for thought and things to look at, but I guess with regards to this, I think it's a positive thing.
So, and I didn't ask any questions of the applicant, and I don't know if this goes to applicant or staff, but let's assume that the request is granted and the additional illuminated sign goes up. Is there going to be, and maybe this is rhetorical, is there going to be an increased visibility from Highway 50 given the conditions as they are right now? Because I don't think you can see the place, frankly. Unless you're specifically looking for it. I mean, I drove by a couple of times specifically looking for it. And what are the metrics here, right? And so I don't know, how would we evaluate that? And again, I'm not speaking against the project, but let's assume that illuminated sign is in place as they're requesting. How does the applicant know, does staff know that there would be, in fact, increased visibility? And I'm not challenging staff's argument for why the request is warranted. I'm just wondering, do we have any metric that says, yes, that in fact is true? If that signage goes up, the visibility from Highway 50 for the traveling motorists, in fact, is going to be enhanced and is going to help the business out. That's what I'm asking, I guess. That's specific to this project.
I don't see that there would be a metric outside of, you know, doing some sort of study before and after, you know, that would require some money, someone to actually, you know, query consumers. And I also don't think that we should look at it, you know, the project proponent can only ask for things within their control. You know, the trees aren't on their property. They could go negotiate with the owner of that property and say, you know, could you trim the trees? But that's, you know, that is an alternative certainly to increase in the signage. To your first question, you know, what's the maximum that we allow? I think that's part of our job as commissioners is to look at things in their context, especially when we're retrofitting and when you're, it's kind of almost like an infill situation. Look at what's around this site. One thing I noticed is not, although the project proponent mentions Highway 50 signage, when you get off of 50 and you're looking down that street, so maybe you saw, you know, Fuel for Less on 50, you turn and it's nighttime. I don't have good night vision. There's a lot of bright lights. What am I looking for? That one more sign on the west elevation would help me pick it out from the different businesses. And then also the Food Mart, you know, okay, we're low on gas. Oh, okay, there's Food Mart. I can get, you know, some snacks, sodas, whatever. So I think that is good for their business, and I appreciate Commissioner Rains going and kind of comparing this one to the other gas stations in town and saying, you don't think it's out of scope or out of scale with the other ones? I think that's also a good metric for us.
I compared them, and they're asking for two items that all the other gas stations already have.
So you don't feel that it's out of line with what's already, their competition?
No, I don't. In fact, they're kind of taking a chance. They're going to spend money to improve the property in the hopes that it pulls people in, like any other manager and business does.
Again, that's, yeah, that's the business owners', you know, their perspective and what they're willing to invest in.
Certainly, certainly they could achieve that within the ordinance limitations of what signage they have, right? Simply by restructuring any signage, they could add the Food Mart. That's up to them what they want to do. Again, I guess what I'm always most concerned about is precedent, okay, and applicability not to this application but to others. And I am still challenged a little bit by if I can't see the plate, if I can't see the forest for the trees, if I can't see the gas station for the trees putting up another sign, the trees are still there. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
So what, again, it gets back to the challenge as to why the request is being made. And I won't beat this.
I mean, what was important to me was that the excess was fairly minimal, so it's not like they're asking for a neon, you know, blinking sign that hangs over the freeway. So to me, the request was really in line with what is already there, what is said at other gas stations. So I don't think that too much precedent would be disturbed in approving this one.
Good point, in terms of how minimal the request. I forgot to mention that. I accept that, just again.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your perspective, and it is, you know, we are setting a precedent. It's also very difficult when you are retrofitting an existing site to, you know, improve traffic through there. Any other comments? Any other discussion? At this time, I would entertain a motion to take action on this item.
I move we accept the proposal as presented.
To take the recommended action from the staff report?
Take a recommended action from the staff report, yes.
And there would be no changes to the staff report, the conditions of approval?
Accept the proposal from the staff report as presented with everything that's listed here with no other changes or additions.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Painter, would you call the roll?
Member Rains.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Member Lepper.
Aye.
So the project is approved. You voted against.
No, I said aye.
You said aye.
I supported.
Okay, aye.
I supported, aye.
Okay, thank you. So it is a 4-0.
Aye, aye, aye.
I heard him say aye.
So, it's okay. I should have.
I apologize for that. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Andrew denied me an abstention.
Oh.
Let's move on to item 6.2. This is a 708 Main Street, Vera Dooley Family Dentistry, request for major change to the approved site plan to allow addition of an emergency generator, propane tank, and fence screening. Mr. Painter, will you please give your staff report?
Yes, attachment two of your staff report contains the applicant's submittal package, and this consists of a project description, site plan, generator specification, and the fence elevations. The graphic, the site plan, and the fence elevation are behind you on the wall tonight for your review, should you need it. Yes, once again, tonight's request is made by Brenton Sanders, who's representing the property owner, Dr. Vera Dooley, the DDS Family Dentistry located at 708 Main Street. They are requesting a major change to a 1988 site plan review. I think that actually predates Member Friend's.
One of the very few.
Position on the Planning Commission. The change involves the addition of, to the exterior landscape, a propane-fueled emergency generator and the propane tank that would serve that generator. The, both the generator and the propane tank are proposed to be screened by wood picket fencing. Based on the site plan, the 22-kilowatt emergency generator would be installed on a concrete pad within the landscape area along the Turner Street side of this business. This is located at the corner of Turner and Main Street, and that would be west of the dental office. The 250-gallon LPG tank to serve the generator would be on the opposite side of the home in the landscape area east of the dental office. These improvements would be screened, as I mentioned, from public view by a four-foot-high wood picket fencing. Wood pickets would be painted to match the base color of the dental facility. New fencing would match the existing wood picket fencing screening, which screens the air conditioning, heating equipment along the west elevation of the dental building. This site is approximately one-fifth of an acre, contains an existing dental office, site landscaping, and onsite parking with vehicle access from Turner. The office was a former residence that was converted to its current business professional use back in 1988 under Site Plan Review 88-11. The site and the immediate surroundings have a land use designation and zoning of commercial. Surrounding the site are a combination of commercial and professional office uses to the north and west. There are residential uses located to the south, and to the east is the city's police department. The request is before you because new equipment that is visible from the public way changes the site plan and under the Site Plan Review regulations must require Planning Commission approval before the city can issue a building permit for their placement. Staff concluded after its analysis of the request activity that this major change project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or what we call SEQA, under Section 15301A. 15301A exempts exterior alteration activities such as electrical conveyances and fencing partitions. Staff also concluded that the major change to the site plan is pertinent to the business professional use onsite, therefore is consistent with the commercial land use designation. Staff also concluded that the major change equipment screen fencing along with the proximity of the emergency generator to sensitive receptors such as the residential and professional uses that surround the use. The sound output from the generator off the project site is expected to be at a noise level normally acceptable under the general plan, plant's health and safety section. And that's normally acceptable to residential and business professional uses. Staff also concluded that based on the screen fencing height, that would adequately screen from the public view the generator as well as the propane tank. Also, that the proposed fence color would match the color of the dental building. And the use of wood pickets as fence material, the major change request is consistent with relevant city code, site plan review, design criteria. Staff this evening is requesting and recommends the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing tonight to receive and consider public input, enter the staff report into the public record, make findings A through F provided on page seven of the staff report, and conditionally approve the project known as 708 Main Street, Site Plan Review 88-11, are major change, subject to the conditions of approval within Attachment 1 or as amended tonight by the Planning Commission. Mr. Sanders, the applicant's representative, is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none. Oh, yes, go ahead.
So, Andrew, in contrasting this staff report with the previous staff report where the basis for the request was quite clear, visibility from the highway in a highway commercial zone, the basis for this request seems a little bit more obscure, but I think I deduced it on page four of the staff report, kind of in the middle. It talks about the ability of the dental practice to generate electricity during power outages. I'm going to presume, and maybe the applicants can speak to this, that this is probably being driven by our new public safety emergency power shut-off that is now state policy for California, which we're becoming more and more like a third world country. But it would have been nice if the specific reason for the request was presented. This seemed to be kind of a hanger-on, and I don't criticize your staff. I generally applaud your staff reports, but I'm presuming this is the fundamental basis for the request.
I think that's actually captured in the memo from Matthew Dooley. That was part of it.
Oh, I may have missed that, and I apologize.
I thought I saw them specifically reference.
Yes, it's, that was provided by the applicant and the property owner. They provided a reason for the generator installation.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that in my quick review. I apologize.
It's okay.
So my deduction, though, was reasonably close.
Your pre-assumption was accurate. I can tell you from just the counteractivity we've had at City Hall, there is interest by not only commercial businesses but also residential owner, property owners to come forward and come forward, and, uh, actually, Mr. Sanders has, uh, been, uh, this isn't the only one that he's, he's come to talk to the city about. So, uh, it, it is something that certainly is on the minds of, of people, and we might get several more, some of which may have site plan reviews, and we might have those in front of you at some future time, but, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, I have. Well, for our staff or the contractor, um, right now, right now, the fence on the tunnel side doesn't quite touch the building, but it almost does. Will the new fence that's going to cover the, um, the generator enclose it completely? Or will it be open on one side?
Enclose the sides visible from Main Street.
Got it. And of course, both of these fences will be identical in height, width, and color.
Correct.
So they correspond. By the way, uh, did you do the fantastic steps on the front of the building that people have been working on the last month?
That wasn't me.
They did an excellent job. That really perks up the front of that edifice completely.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, um, Mr. Sanders, would you like to give a short presentation about your, the project, or?
Sure. I mean, to me, it seems pretty cut and dry. We have a dentist office that likes to practice family dentistry and wants to provide services to the residents of Placerville, and under the impending doom of the PG&E shut-offs, if you're having your teeth drilled on and the power goes out, uh, that, that pretty much sums it up to me.
As long as the Novocain doesn't wear out, I don't care.
Yeah, so it seems like, you know, we have a reasonable right to expect power, whether we have to provide it or our utility provider provides it. So, I mean, this whole thing, I'd just be happy to go install that generator last week.
I know, I think it's a, a very proactive approach, and, uh, you know, appreciate the, the forward-thinking. Oh, please, uh, step up to the podium if you would. And if you don't mind, step up to the podium and, and give us your name, um.
Yes, I'm Dr. Vera Dooley, I'm actually the dentist who's working there. It's just, I wanted to mention that a lot of our patients, they drive for one hour, one hour twenty minutes. They come from Pollock Pines, they come from all over the area, and a lot of them already have generators on their property, and, uh, so they really recommend it for us, and it would be very good for them to not drive one hour twenty minutes and turn around and go back. I think it would really help a lot of people.
Okay. I, I did have, uh, one question, as long as you're at the podium, and, and Mr. Sanders, maybe you could answer this as well.
Yes.
As, as we've, um, pointed out, the, the reason for your request is these planned or announced power outages, um, from PG&E, and the reason they are doing that is to reduce the risk of igniting a wildfire, and we are in a fire, by, high fire hazard zone. In addition to the, on the Planning Commission, I'm also on the Placerville Fire Safe Council. And earlier today, I, I shared email with Mr. Painter about, um, reducing the, the fire risk of the project that you have described, and specifically, uh, we have updated building codes now. For, for new construction, there are different building materials, and, and Mr. Sanders, you're the, the contractor for the, uh, project.
Correct.
And so you're, you're very, I'm sure, I hope you're very familiar with the, the new building codes and requirements to reduce our wildfire risk.
I haven't failed an inspection in a while.
Oh, well, I'm sure you're learning as you go. So given the basis, uh, for your request is that, uh, you know, because of the enhanced wildfire risk in the state of California, we are expecting these power outages, and therefore, you know, I think it's very reasonable in, in my mind of what you're asking for. What I was going to request of you, even though this is not a brand-new construction, is for you to consider using more ignition-resistant or of, there are woods that have been pretreated to make, uh, wood that make it's, uh, more fire-retardant. And, um, at this, it's, um, something, it's kind of new, that, you know, the city, we, we've adopted the building codes, but we're also in the process of considering how we can reduce our wildfire risk as a community, and the Fire Safety Council is part of that. Anyway, to make a long story a little bit shorter, I was just going to ask if you, it, I don't think it would be too much of a burden as far as expense for you to consider a fire-retardant treated wood that could be painted, uh, just as you described. I think the blending in the picket fes-
No issue whatsoever.
And, um-
However, these Generax are designed, and you all listed, to be totally, oh, man, the engineering that goes into these things is incredible. I think they're great.
Oh, I, the, the, the generator itself, I'm not concerned about. It's the fence material, uh, the screening material. You also have, um, some nice, uh, trees alongside there. These are things that we're looking at as far as, uh, reducing our wildfire risk.
So if downtown Placerville burns down, you're worried about ten feet of fence?
Well, you know, these embers can come in, and, uh, should they ignite the fire, uh, the, the fencing material or, uh, catch the trees, then, then we've got a little bit more of a problem than maybe we didn't have to have. Also, on, on the propane tank side, you're also going to put in the same material to fence that.
Correct.
So you could, my request to you is to make it, um, as safe as possible, as far as safe as possible.
Most definitely.
And I don't think-
As an electrician, safety is kind of my number-one job.
Well, I'm glad we're on the same page.
Thousands from burning down.
And appreciate you, you allowing me to kind of express, you know, this concern. It, it's new, and, uh, we're, we're still trying to kind of formulate, I think, as a community, what we can do to, uh, improve, you know, our resiliency. So, uh, that was my comment, and I appreciate you being receptive to my ideas.
No problems here. I'll go book up fireproof paint.
If that were, if that were available, I think we'd all be using it. But, uh, are there any other questions from the commissioners for the project proponent? Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll go ahead and bring this, uh, matter back to the, uh, commission for some discussion and possible action. Thank you very much. Any, any concerns from the commissioners on this project?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair.
I, I am receptive to that idea.
I move we approve the requested amendment to seven oh eight Main Street, Site Plan Review SPR eighty-eight dash eleven. Major change adopting the staff report as part of the public record, including items one through three as listed on page seven of the staff report, and the conditions specified on attachment one, adding condition nine, consider the use of fire-retardant materials in construction. This may be achieved with consultation with, uh, planning staff.
A second.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion? All right. Um, Mr. Painter, will you call the roll?
Member Rains.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Member Lepper.
Yes.
Wonderful. We have, we have another project. Thank you very much for coming out and, uh, and hearing us out, watching us deliberate off of your project. Okay. We look forward to seeing you again.
Oh, I'm happy to hear you.
Mr. Sanders. Okay, uh, so that takes care of our public hearings. Uh, we have no continued items and no new business. That moves us to number nine matters from commissioners and staff. Commissioners, do you have any concerns? Staff, anything you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, we will be having, excuse me, we have an agendized and noticed, uh, public hearing for the July sixteenth meeting. Uh, that item, the sole public notice or public hearing item will be a formula business request for the three-eight-five Main Street site, which is the former Centro Coffee location. Sour Dough and Company is the name of the business. So that will be coming before you on the sixteenth. Also want to alert you, due to the, to the recent changes to city code as it relates to the ADU regulations, um, I've asked Lynn to prepare some copy swap-outs of chapter four of your Home Reference zoning code. The reason it's all done, the entire chapter, it's just we couldn't remember where the page changes were in your copy, so it's just better to give you the whole thing. So please pick up one of those on the way out, and, um, Vice, Vice Chair List, we will hold on to his until, um, he returns, and he is, he's informed us that he will miss the sixteenth meeting as well. That's all from staff.
Madam Chair, through the chair, um, I may have a challenge for the sixteenth, but I shall endeavor to dismiss that challenge. So I'll know, I'll know more early next week, and I can advise you.
Thank you very much for letting us know.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same boat for the sixteenth, but I know that it's important that we have a quorum for that.
Um, I'm more concerned, not, I know a quorum can pass things, but this is a hot topic, so if we're only going to have a quorum, it might be better to defer it to the meeting Three of us are going to get-
That sounds like a statement, so we'll take-
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a question. If there's only three of us, number one, I'm a little reticent about being the subject in bombardment of commentary.
Sure.
And if it's something, and if it's something that's important, and this is very important, it might have more weight if there's a full commission than just the quorum commission. So if two people can't make it, perhaps we might want to think about rescheduling it. That's where I was going.
We can always, uh, take the action to continue it if we feel like we can't.
Well, we can continue it.
Mm-hmm. But we could, uh, go ahead and start taking public comment. We would convene our meeting. It has been publicly, publicly posted rather than-
You may have three commissioners missing. We already know for sure Commissioner List is absent. I, I won't know until next week if I can rearrange my travel schedule to make the meeting.
And if we can't, don't have a quorum present, then obviously we wouldn't be able to, um, take action, and at that point, we wouldn't be taking public comment either.
No, we could not start even the item, other than to announce it, then staff would declare that I noticed an absence of a quorum, therefore we couldn't, we couldn't do anything.
We wouldn't even be able to convene.
No. You do not have a quorum in which to continue the item, so it just would not be heard that evening.
Yeah, I've already sort of have the plans, but I can, let me see what I can do.
So Commissioner Lepper, it sounds like we're in the same situation. We have, uh, the commitments, and we'll try to rearrange, so.
Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll know next week, and I don't know about-
I can look at that in the next couple of days, for sure. Yeah.
I appreciate you trying to adjust your schedules, but, because this is, uh, a hot topic.
And I absolutely concur, and, once he told me what the topic was of the meeting, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try.
Okay. Well, we'll see what happens on the, uh, on the sixteenth.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for letting us know, um, so that, um, no more, no other matters for, uh, from the staff for the commission? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I have one quick update on our cannabis applications. Um, as you recall, we reported that we, the staff received thirteen cannabis applications. Uh, those applications went through phase one, which was a preliminary review for application completeness. Phase two was those applications were sent to HDL, our consultant, and they did a thorough review of the application and ranked and scored, uh, in accordance with a set of criteria. Uh, those applications that received eighty percent or greater will move on to phase three, so, um, we now are in receipt of, of those scorings. There's a, uh, committee that was formed that will review HDL's, um, uh, scoring to make sure that, that the city concurs, and once that process is done, we will then notify those applicants that achieved the eighty percent or greater and notify those that didn't, uh, but giving the opportunity for those that did, uh, to pay then the, uh, phase three fee and move on to phase three, which will be then a interview, uh, that will be performed, uh, by that committee, and then we will also do our own independent scoring of those applications. And then those that receive eighty percent or greater will move on then to phase four, uh, which will essentially be given to the city manager. City manager will hold a public, uh, meeting, will give, um, all property owners within five hundred feet of any of the prospective cannabis business locations to, uh, give comment on, on the proposal, and it'll be the city manager then, uh, who will issue or, or choose, I guess, the top three, will then be issued a license, uh, to operate a cannabis business operation.
And, um, if I understood you correctly, so now you are in phase two. HDL?
Uh, HDL is basically completed, so right in between phase two and phase three. So prior to actually fully engage in phase three, uh, this committee will review the applications and the scoring done by HDL to make sure that there's concurrence. And the reason for this is when HDL, uh, first proposed to be our consultant, they were only anticipating about six applications for the city of Placerville, based on our size, and, you know, they have a lot of experience with doing this consulting for other jurisdictions, and so we received thirteen, and they weren't really prepared for that, so there may have been more than one reviewer, and we just want to make sure that, you know, we, that, that we feel that we, we agree with how they scored them before proceeding on and, and then, uh, doing our own scoring and having, and conducting the interview.
Do you establish a, a timeline for HDL? Do you give them all, did you give them the application in, say, X number of weeks, or, um, or was it kind of, it was a bigger workload than they had anticipated, but?
Right, there was no, uh, time, time constraints or put on them. We, we'd estimated originally, we're probably going to look at maybe up to two months. It was probably a little, little bit over that.
Okay, and, and so at this time, uh, you don't have a, a timeline for when you'll be through with all four phases?
We don't. We try and get through as quickly as we can, but, you know, we're dealing with, uh, different folks that, uh, make up the committee with different scheduling, so we're trying to get everything scheduled. We're having a pre-meeting coming up, I think, next week, where we're going to start looking at some of those scores and determine whether or not we need to meet again, and then from there we'll move forward. We have no set, uh, schedule. We're basically moving along to be as thorough as we can.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I have a question.
And I have a, I have a question of staff on a completely different topic, but I'll, I'll defer Andrew Rais's hand.
Just one, did all thirteen applicants go to phase two?
Um, I can't tell you at this point in time.
Okay.
Which ones achieved eighty percent or greater, because staff still has to perform that, that concurrence review.
Oh, I don't want to know who they are. I just wanted to know whether the number thirteen was a-
Some, some did, and some didn't.
Okay. Thank you, and I respect that confidentiality.
Getting back to meter, meeting calendar, um, I want to remind you that the first Tuesday in August, the Planning Commission does not meet, and that's nationalized out. So I don't know if that has any influence on those members who might be absent on that date, but, or, uh, on the sixteenth, but I just want you to be aware that we will not hold a meeting on the sixth, so that you all can go out to the neighborhoods and participate in that event, which is a fun event around town.
Mr. Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pierre or Andrew, we had a, um, preliminary concept for a boutique hotel in the vicinity of Mosquito Road, uh, and the transit station. I haven't heard anything about that for a long time. Uh, city would love to see a boutique hotel that would be built, um, on top of a parking garage, but that boutique hotel proposal has evaporated. Okay, all right. Thank you, unfortunately. Okay.
Sorry to hear that. All right, any other matters? Okay.
Move to adjourn?
All right, we have a, uh, I'll second that motion. So, let's adjourn the meeting. It's, uh-
Without prejudice.
Do we have to vote on adjournment?
No.
Okay, good.
As we're out of here.
The meeting is now at, I can declare that as chair.
Six forty-nine.
Okay, at six forty-nine, I'm adjourning our meeting. Thank you, everyone.
All played, Madam Chair.